Being the time is 5:00 PM. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for July 2nd, 2025 to order. Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Elper, absent Commissioner Forney.
Here.
Commissioner Menz, absent Commissioner Olson, absent Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice President Musage.
Present.
President Abeni.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. As far as I know, Commissioner Elper will not be joining us, but I think the other members are probably still on their way. The agendas before us may take a mostage to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please, oh, and I'd like to point out something about the agenda. There is an item that was removed from the agenda. It will be put to a future meeting. It was a discussion item on our Indigenous Action Plan Priorities and Update, but one of the people presenting was ill today and we needed to reschedule. Secretary Ringel.
President Abeni, thank you for recognizing me. There's also one item that might come up from Committee Admin Finance, 2025-113.
Thank you. So now any more discussion about the agenda? None, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have one set of minutes. Would somebody please move the minutes and read the date?
I'll move the regular meeting minutes of June 18th, 2025.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of June 18th, 2025, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. We're moving right along here to reports of officers, and we do have a report from the Superintendent Bangora this evening, so.
Thank you, President Abeni and Commissioners. We'll jump right in here again. This is reflective of, as audiences might not know, the strategic directions that this board has adopted in the last four years. And we reflect these reports of officers to coincide with those five strategic directions that this board has directed the staff to do. So these reflect that in some way. So for the audience, that's what it is. So the first one we'll start with is the strategic direction, A, act boldly for our climate future tree. And we're going to talk about tree planting. NPRB forestry crews have officially planted all trees for the spring. Forestry crews worked hard this season to plant over 8,300 trees throughout the city. That's a lot of trees to give a shade, of course, at our community and a myriad of other benefits as they grow larger and mature over the years. Congratulations to our forestry team and the work they do. They're absolutely amazing. And every year, this wonderful city through our park system gets anywhere between 8,000 to 9,000 trees every year. So we're very proud of that. So great work from our team. Strategic direction B, cultivate each community's place and honor cultural traditions in Minneapolis parks. We're going to talk about North Commons Alternative, a new kind of summer splash. So now that the North Commons Water Park is closed for major upgrades, we've planned exciting alternatives to keep youth active and engaged all summer long. Starting Wednesday, July 2nd, which today, youth can enjoy a summer field filled with fun, safe, and supervised field trips to local swim destinations. Each trip includes round-trip bus transportation to and from North Commons Recreation Center with oversight provided by train NPRB staff. A brochure with full program details has been placed at all recreation centers and shared with families. And if you look through some of the information here, we have developed a really great program. And I will also say, just to add to this, that I had the pleasure of meeting with Malik Rucker at V3. We're still in conversation with that. So we are continually working with our partners in the community to make sure our young people are, have a place to cool off and to swim. And we're excited about the relationships that we have and how we're going to continue to build this program. But we wanted to share this with you at this point, since North Commons Water Park will be closed. This is a great plan to make sure our young people have access to water. Strategic direction C, implement quality youth and intergenerational programs, red, white, and boom. The countdown is on to the red, white, and boom, the annual Independence Day celebration along the beautiful Minneapolis downtown riverfronts. Join us for a day on July, on the 4th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM for a celebration like no other. This year will host Morning Movement, Two Free Yoga in the Park Sessions, a Makers Market at Water Works in the event lawn throughout the day, pickleball on the parkway. I meant to jump on that one. Open play beginning on 3:30 and into the evening. We'll partner up with President Abeni. We'll be a team. Dancing, multiple sessions at different types of instructor, guided dancing all evening long, food trucks along the parkway throughout the day, and of course, the fireworks. There's going to be some really wonderful activities in this space and very excited about the event. And we had a great press conference today with our partners across from the Sheriff's Department, MPD, all the folks, troopers, Chief Ojado, all of, everybody was there, we had a great conference, a great session. So we're really looking forward to this event. Every single year, we're excited about it. So look forward to seeing all of us out there who can make it. Strategic direction D, care for park assets to meet evolving needs and practices. And this is about victory memorial. Since the beginning of spring, staff from the North Service Area staff have edged each memorial plaque in preparation for Memorial Day. They did the edging by hand and not, to not damage the plaques. For those of who, for those of us that don't know, Victory Memorial Drive was dedicated to the Hennepin County soldiers that died in World War I. There are over 500 memorial trees and plaques. This, the week leading up, staff spring trimmed in the rain, blew off pass and memorial plaques, pressure washed flagpole areas, hammered in flag sleeves for each memorial plaque, removed graffiti, and picked up letter. Again, very proud of the North Service Area. They all know who they are. They did great work. And thank you to our Commissioners, Commissioner Thompson, for really, you know, contacting me and being really engaged and involved. We appreciate you. And again, we appreciate our service members who gave their lives to this amazing country. So very proud of the day. Strategic direction E, steward our natural areas, our resources. Tree steward training at Elliott Park. On Saturday, June 14th, interested volunteers attended the tree stewards' training to focus on downtown area tree care at Elliott Park. This program was put on by the Partnership with NPRB Forestry and the Downtown Improvement District, the DID. Tree stewards is a U of M program available to communities throughout Minnesota who are looking to have a more dedicated tree care experience volunteer group. Volunteers learned about proper planting, mulching, watering, and pruning techniques. They also gained valuable hands-on practice by pruning young trees in the park. The last piece here to speak to is, I think this was asked for me to present, the Assistant Superintendent of Recreation Search Update. NPRB is working with MGT Recruiting in the search for the new Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, replacing Mimi Calhoun, who retired from the position on May 30th. On June 11th and 12th, in-person interviews were held with the candidates. Finalists were selected. Currently, the finalists are in the process of being assessed by Olson Consulting Group. That's as much as I can share. And if the President Abeni and Commissioners have any questions, we're then happy to answer that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for the superintendent related to his presentation? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll note that Commissioner Olson's joined us, and I received a text from Commissioner Menz. He's trying to get here. I think he's having some issues, so. Okay, let's move to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, or committees. Does anybody have anything? Okay, I'll just comment that there was a Board of Estimate and Taxation meeting last Wednesday, and the park board came and, park board staff came and did a presentation, the annual presentation that's made to the BET. It included, traditionally it includes a report on NPP 20, but this report included also some things related to our our general fund requests and things like that, our general fund operations, I'll say. And we did have some, you know, the BET does have public comment period now. They didn't have that prior to the current Board of Estimate and Taxation, the current directly elected members. And the difference between that and our open time is at the BET, it has to be, the comment has to be related to something on the agenda. So speakers came to speak on the importance of what the parks do for our city and the services that the parks provide. It was, it was fantastic, so. Commissioner Menz has joined us, and with that, I will go ahead and ask someone to, we'll move to the consent business. Move the consent items forward here.
I'll move the consent agenda as a slate.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent items as a slate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.
On behalf of the Planning Committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2025-129, resolution directing in lieu of approving the Rick Rucker East Bank Trail nomination, staff to work with the nominator to develop a proposal for board approval that will recognize the importance of the running community to the riverfront and honor the legacy of Rick Rucker without naming a park or park asset for a specific individual.
Is there a second? I can, second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Menz.
Yeah, sorry for my delay. I just think that this is a really great way for us to honor Rick without having to, because I know that I wasn't supportive of naming the trail after him, but we did, we're finding a way with the family to support that. So I think that that's really great work by the staff and the Commissioners who led that.
Other discussion? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and vote then? All those in favor of Resolution 2025-129, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
I'd like to move Resolution 2025-125, resolution approving the preferred concept plan for Bike Skills Park at South 34th Avenue and Minnehaha Creek. Minnehaha Creek Segment Four Tennis Course Transformation.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2025-125, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Oh, sorry. On behalf of the, I will also move Resolution 2025-126, a resolution approving temporary occupancy under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for the Niklet Avenue South Bridge Rehabilitation Project, adjacent to and within Minnehaha Parkway Regional Trail.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2025-126, oh, Secretary Ringel?
Thank you, President Abeni. I believe and Council Rice can confirm that this might need a roll call.
We should have one.
Thank you. So for Resolution 2025-126, Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Elper, absent Commissioner Forney.
Aye.
Commissioner Menz.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musage.
Aye.
President Abeni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
Great, that, that motion carries.
On behalf of the Administration and Finance Committee, I will move Resolution 2025-115, resolution awarding a construction contract to G Urban Companies Incorporated for the base bid amount of $1,026,000 and taking alternate number one for the storage building for $250,000 and alternate number two for the granite trail and concrete pad for $92,000, totaling $1,368,000. Four, the Farview Park Phase Two improvements, bid event number 3604, pending approval by the City of Minneapolis Finance and Property Services Procurement Division and Minneapolis Civil Rights Department in further authorizing administrative use of a 5% construction contingency up to $68,400 for necessary construction change orders that may arise from the contract and authorizing the transfer of $60,000 from the 2025 capital investment construction contingency fund.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2025-115, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
I will also move Resolution 2025-127, a resolution amending the NPP 20, 2025 construction contingency to allocate $105,000 to the Victory Park Splash Pad Improvement Project.
Second. I heard a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-127, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, so what we'll have to do now, we've basically come to the end of the agenda, but we have to, we will have open time at 5:30, and we won't begin until 5:30. So I'll recess this, this meeting, and then we'll turn to the next meeting, which is Admin and Finance. So I'm recessing the full board right now.
Excellent. The time being 5:15 PM. I would like to call the Administration and Finance Committee to order, Secretary Ringel, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Elper, absent Commissioner Forney.
Aye.
Present.
Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Secretary Ringel, do you have your light on?
Would someone like to move our agenda?
I'll also move.
Thank you so much. All those who approve of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Would someone like to move our minutes?
I'll move the minutes for June 18th, 2025.
Thank you. All those approve of adding the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have some minutes. And would someone like to move our resolution, knowing that we might, we have 14 minutes to present before we'll be interrupted again?
I'll move Resolution 2025-138, resolution requesting the Board of Estimate and Taxation set the maximum property tax levy for the 2026 budget at an estimated amount of $95,885,946 in an increase of 7.1%, 7.5%, my fault.
1.5%.
1.5%.
Thank you. And Director Wiseman, thank you so much. I would love, I'm sure we all would love to hear about this monetary presentation. Take it away.
Chair Thompson, I'm Director Lee Wiseman, the Finance Director for the Minneapolis Park Board. This information will be available on the public website, Before we get into the actual resolution, I want to take just a little bit of time and provide some updates because this percentage increase is slightly lower than what we had talked about during the budget retreat. So I want to go over what has changed. So our general fund six-year financial projection, I believe during the budget retreat, we were projecting 7.77% for 2026. That has dropped down to 7.15. The out years have not changed, so it's just the 2026 column that is seeing some adjustments. So again, included in our projections are the operating costs associated with the addition of new parks, amenities, or areas that have experienced increased usage. So Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks are, Greco's already online, and Upper Harbor Terminal Park will come online in 2026. So that is represented by a million-dollar requested increase. What has changed for us is we have continued our negotiations with the City of Minneapolis around our general fund overhead charge. The city and park board are working together to examine each rate model line item to clarify what services are provided and to what extent. So it's not that the city has been undercharging us. It's, it's to identify what services we are actually utilizing and what extent. So the example that I have, the main reduction, or the largest reduction that occurred, is in the 311 services. So the initial charge for our overhead charge for 311 services was to be $520,000. And we requested an analysis of the call volumes that 311 is getting for the park board. And that changed our allocation of a charge down to just under $67,000. So we're 1% of the call volume, so our charge is 1% of the budget of 311. So that was, that's how it went from, I think we were at 80% or close to 80% increase, and we're now at 36% increase. We are still in conversations around the City Assessor's Office. The City Assessor's Office, the city is charging us for the City Assessor's Office because they have a mechanism to do so. In further conversations with them, they are not charging the other taxing jurisdictions that levy taxes on Minneapolis properties because they don't have a mechanism to do that. And so we are, we are making our case that if they aren't charging the other taxing jurisdictions, they should not be charging the park board as a taxing jurisdiction. We haven't received final confirmation on that. So I'm hoping before this board would formally adopt the maximum property tax levy increase in two weeks, that we would have a response and a resolution on that item. The NPRB does not pay a direct charge for the current financial system, which is called the COMIT. It's a PeopleSoft system. We pay indirectly through our general fund overhead charge, but we don't pay a direct cost. Moving forward, as the city enters into a new contract with Workday, a different financial provider, financial, or ERP system provider, they are requesting that we pay for our user and license fees going forward. So I have now included in our property tax request the amount that we're estimating, estimating for 2026 through 2030. And you'll see on this chart that the first year is $230,000, and by the 2030, it will be for over $400,000. That's because we're phasing in the new financial system. HR and payroll will be going first, and then the other financial systems will come in later. So it's phasing out of the old system into the new system and progressing in that manner. So when you get to the property, maximum property tax levy, I've highlighted those two items, so you'll be able to see where those amounts have changed. Again, I want to remind you that during our balancing of the 2025 and 2026 budget, we had service level reductions, particularly in recreation center hours, closing an hour earlier, closing on Sundays, and closing on all federal holidays, and then the reduction of five ice rinks. Our one-time temporary budget reductions, the limited activation at Greco Park has been funded through a reallocation of the North Commons Pool operating costs that are being saved as that is not operating during construction. And then we closed our youth investment gap with the combination of, combination of position vacancies, holding three youth program specialists vacant for the entire year, as well as not transferring money into the land acquisition reserve account. This is a chart just showing that in '24 and '25, our complement of general fund positions reduced in both 2024 and 2025. 2024 was reallocating or repositioning positions between the enterprise fund and the general fund, and 2025 really reflects those service level reductions that were adopted in 2025. The increase of 9.7 FTEs in 2026 is directly related to Greco Park and Upper Harbor Terminal Park. So the maximum property tax levy, the Board of Estimate and Taxation is required by state law to set the maximum tax levy for the City of Minneapolis, the Park Board, the Municipal Building Commission, and the Public Housing Authority. There are six members on the board, the mayor, city council president, the chairperson of the Ways and Beans Budget Committee, our park board commissioner, and then two members elected citywide. As a reminder, we are very heavily reliant on property taxes for our general fund, much more so than the City of Minneapolis. And we make up just under 18% of the total city tax bill. When you consider all taxing jurisdictions that show up on your property tax system, property tax statement, we are eight cents on the dollar. Again, we heard from the assessor that our, that property taxes, the impact of increases will be more largely felt on residential properties as opposed to commercial and industrial because of the change of values. This is a reminder that we right now have a gap between what the mayor adopted in their five-year financial plan for the park board property taxes. They have estimated a 1.37% increase, and it's made up of these three pieces, the current service level increase, the youth increase, and the Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal. This is now where we are sitting for a property tax levy increase. It's 7.15%. A large portion of that, 3.4 million, is directly related to our, our wage and fringe, our staffing levels here at the park board. Inflation on goods and services, the one point, almost 1.2 million, represents a 4% increase. And that's higher than, historically, we have increased around 2%. But with the high level of inflation over the past few years, we, our buying power has decreased and become critical. And then also in goods and services, it accounts for the increases that we need to make to our internal service funds due to labor contracts and changes in state law around. our internal service funds due to labor contracts and changes in state law around workers' compensation. Then you'll see the general fund overhead increase. I believe it was around 1.2 million. That's down to just under $500,000. Again, the large adjustment for 3-1-1. They reduced the intergovernmental relations office at the city to zero, so those reductions are reflected there. You'll see the Workday and Budget Tool Estimate and Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks. And again, these are charts that you are familiar with. The difference between what we are projecting we need of 6.9 million, the 7.15%, and what the city is estimating for us, the 1.2%, there is a full overall gap of 5.1 million. If you look, excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Director Weisman.
Sure.
I just am realizing it's 5:30, and I was alerted by our president that we need to go back to open time. I apologize. We will, what's the proper word? Recess Administration of Finance and consider this in a moment. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you, President Bennet.
Thank you. And I'll reconvene the full board and move to open time. I'll read the open time rules. I will call on people from the speaker list only. Names are added to the speaker list before, by calling in before 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting or by adding it in person at the board meeting before 5:30 p.m. The time allotted for all speakers shall not exceed 15 minutes. We have two speakers signed up tonight, so each person will have up to three minutes to speak. Time may not be transferred to someone else. Please watch the timer and stay within your allotted time. This is an opportunity for you to address the board. We are listening, but we will not respond. That said, please don't hesitate to contact any of the commissioners for dialogue and further discussion. To protect the privacy of individuals, please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues or pending litigation. Discriminatory or harassing words directed at anyone will not be tolerated. Each speaker is asked to state their name and address. And so, as I said, we have two speakers. The first speaker is Eileen Johnson, followed by Tom Arneson. Welcome.
Okay. Hello. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eileen Johnson, and I am a resident of North Loop. Do I give my address now, or?
That's good enough.
Okay. We are here today to represent our all-volunteer network of Minneapolis neighborhood safety clubs. Our mission is to bring neighbors, business, MPD, and park police together in a spirit of friendship. Together, we stand for a safer community. We have walkers in the North Loop, Mill District, Sheridan, Loring Park, Kenwood, Lawry Hill, East Styles, East Bremekaska, West Makaska, Uptown, Wyndham, East Harriet, Nicollet Island, East Bank, Dinkytown, Armitage, Fulton, Kenny, Thomas Beach, and Linden Hills neighborhoods. And this month, we will start groups in Kingfield, St. Anthony West, and St. Anthony East. Additionally, we are proud to partner with the long-established Stevens Square Loring Heights Safety Group. The Fourth of July is the busiest day of the year for our park police officers. We are here this evening to express our thanks for them. We are grateful for their vital work in all of our parks across our beloved city. They serve with excellence, and we appreciate them. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for those comments. Tom Arneson.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me? So as you can tell by my clothing, I came to be part of the walking group, the safety groups. But I decided to sign my name up because of something very positive that happened and I discovered at Loring Park. I live at Forton Grohlund Avenue in Loring Park, and each summer, I spend many hours pulling Canada thistle out of the shore of Loring Pond. There's a lot of it. I do this through the coordination with the Friends of Loring Park Gardening Group. I went out this morning, because it was a convenient time for me to do some of that work, and I discovered all of these kids in blue t-shirts who were pulling thistle. Went over there to say hello to them. They were from a group called Mississippi Green Team, 14 to 16 years old. Somehow, the park board coordinated with them. I went over and talked to them. I was so impressed by their maturity and their interest, and you wouldn't believe how much work they accomplished to be 16 again. So I speak to highlight the importance of the natural resources in our parks. They are such a treasure. Thank you for what you do to attend to them. And I celebrate this creative and effective action, whoever did it, to put together, the kids got paid, I'm sure not too much, but to put together this, this work with the Mississippi Green Team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. With, with that, I'll close open time, and I'll recess the full board. We have other items to come back to.
President Bennet.
Yes.
I know it's out of order, but I would just like to make a huge thanks to Eileen Johnson, who started all this, and I really want to.
Thank all these people.
Thank you, Commissioner Forney. Okay. We'll recess the full board and return to Admin and Finance.
I will call Admin and Finance back to order, and if it would please, Director Weisman, to continue your presentation. Thank you so much. All right. So again, chart one shows the total gap between our almost $7 million need and what the mayor has currently adopted or projected for us at 1.2 million. That's a $5.1 million gap. Chart two represents not losing staff, so that's just focused directly on that $3.4 million that we need to sustain our workforce. And the amount that is recommended through the city, which is a $2.5 million gap, are approximately 22 FTEs. So just as a reminder, we added 22 FTEs for the youth investment. So in one fell swoop, that could potentially go away. And then chart three shows the gap between the million dollars we say we need for Greco and Upper Harbor Terminal Parks and the $300,000 that the city has estimated for those two parks. So that's $761,000 for those. So our budget process next steps is the Admin and Finance Committee will discuss this resolution that is before you. It will go to the full board on July 16th. Is that the right date? 16th. And the mayor's recommended budget will come out on August 15th, and we will be presenting to the Board of Estimate and Taxation and sharing our resolution with them in September. And the BET will set the maximum levy on September 17th. So that's the end of the presentation, and I'll open it up for questions or discussion around the property tax request. Thank you so much, Director Weisman. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Oh, yes, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. So you mentioned assessor costs, and I guess I'm wondering, so how much does the city pay for that? And then, I guess, what's our portion? And is there, I mean, does the city, I thought maybe there might be programs for the city to go through the county for that assessor? Is it necessary that the city does this on their own?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Olson, we did reach out to our legal, so Brian, please correct anything, or Legal Counsel Rice, correct anything I might say. But it is, it is a mandate from the state to the county to do the assessing of properties. And I don't have the exact numbers, but the city is the only first-class city that still has its own assessing department. Hennepin County, for the cities that they do the assessing in, they are not charging the cities, city for those services.
Okay. So the city could potentially find discounts there, but for some reason, mayor's office, counsel, whoever wants to hold on to it, I'm just wondering, you know, depending on the right numbers, that could cover a significant portion of our gap.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Please, by all means.
Madam Chair, I think our Commissioner Olson's question, I did look into this matter. I think the number was 6.3 million is what the city has in its budget to pay for the city assessor's office. And of the 45 cities in Hennepin County, only six now have their own assessors. And I think it was last year, the county agreed to assume the cost for the cities that wanted to turn that function over to the county. And I think two or three cities did, and I think they believe that that trend will continue. And I think of all the cities in the state, there's only a dozen or perhaps less that actually have their own city assessor as opposed to just having a county assessor do the assessing.
Well, so thanks for this. I mean, I'm not on this committee, but obviously, we need to ask for what we need to ask for. But maybe on top of that, we can be having conversations around other ways to find savings for the city that could perhaps be passed on to us.
I, I appreciate that line of questioning, Commissioner Olson, because that, that was not something I was aware of. So may I ask to follow up? Does, for example, does St. Paul have their own assessor's office? Do we know that? Counsel Rice?
Yes, Madam Chair. The city of St. Paul's not had an assessor for over 50 years. I think Ramsey County's done the assessing for, since World War II.
Wow. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Menz.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I don't serve on this committee, but I did have a couple of questions. So, Director Weisman, the mechanism, what is, what is the mechanism that is used to charge us that's not used for other jurisdictions?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Menz, I mean, the general fund overhead rate.
Okay.
Charge.
Okay.
So they've included it in their rate model.
Okay. All right. The other question I had, so when you put up that dollar, and maybe this is a little bit of background, that maybe I'm sure I may have been told this in the past, so for us, it's eight cents on the dollar. Like, what is, what does it look like in other urban settings? Do we, do we have information around, like, how we compare to other urban settings who don't have an independent, I mean, like, what is the budget that the city spends on parks? We're spending, we're telling, saying here that it's 8% that goes to us, but maybe there's more spent on parks. What, how does that compare? Do you know?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Menz, I don't have information. I was just at the Government Finance Officers Association Conference, and the city of Shakopee did a budget presentation, and in their budget, parks are 14%.
Okay.
And we're 17% of the total city.
Okay.
So if you go back to this slide, we're, we're slightly higher than the city of Shakopee's parks.
Okay. From the, from the full budget. And then for the youth increase, for the 200, for the 260,000, yeah, so current, what is that specifically, do we, do we have an idea of what that would specifically be going to, or is that just going into general area of the budget? What, what does that $260,000 represent to the city that they're cutting from us specifically?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Menz, first of all, this is what the city is budgeting for us, so this is included, not cut.
Okay.
The $260,000 is the annual amount. If you remember, the $2.6 million, we received 1.3 in property taxes, 1.3 in ARPA. And then ARPA went away as property taxes started going up. We have 26 and 27 still to get this 260,000. So that, we're up to the 2.6 million in property taxes for our youth investment.
And our youth investment, 22 FTE positions.
Correct.
And that, was that the sole use of that funding, or was there, that was the specific use of all that funding? If I remember correctly, I think that's true.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Menz, it was 22 positions plus material and supplies, contractual services for the programming that they would be doing.
Okay. Thanks. And I know that we've probably had this before, but, you know, I'll ask somebody for the list of those 22 positions, and I know that we've gotten some reviews on what, what those positions have done, but I think it'd be interesting to look at those again.
Sorry, I turned myself off. Commissioner Forney.
Thank you. Once again, wonderful presentation. I did watch the BET presentation, and you did. And could you give some clarity, or somebody give some clarity of, first of all, thank you for breaking out Greco and Upper Harbor. And what would be the difference of, shall we say, today versus if we got the funding? What, what add-on services would be, there be if we had the full funding?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Forney, I saw all the eyes look toward me. So, well, Upper Harbor Terminal, of course, would have staffing, right? So that's, you know, there's a, there's a zero staffing there, and that would be the staffing complement for it. And then at Greco, what we're looking at there is we're currently a five-day service. So we're Wednesday through Sunday. We're stretching staff from the downtown service area in order to accommodate that. We're increasingly dependent on rentals in order to be able to provide staffing within that space. So you would, you would, you would see us be able to replenish the staff who are in downtown and then fully staff the Greco building. That's really on the programming side. On the operating side, I would say the stretch is even more significant. So we're using some funding right now, kind of, kind of a, as an opportunity where we have North Commons that isn't open, we're able to take some of the staffing, some of the resources that we'd otherwise be using in that pool to be able to stretch into that space. So that's a limited time within kind of the next five years of our ability to be able to continue to use that type of staffing. So you're, what you're really looking at is, at most, a five-day service, probably heavily rental-based, and eventually, we'll even be stretching the operations staff more than we are right now as we bring, say, North Commons fully back online.
And can you give me a little better description of what you mean by operations? Lawn mowing?
Yes, certainly. Chair Thompson, Commissioner Forney, if you think about any of the grounds maintenance, the plowing, the maintenance of the facility, the, could bring Jeremy up here potentially, he might even want to speak more to it, but there's, there's a lot in that facility, both the building as well as the actual grounds, that, that's what I'm referring to.
I appreciate it. And I just need to say that, I'm just, this is such an important aspect of the budget to pull out and articulate. As we all know, we've had tragedies in that immediate area at Greco. Ten blocks away from Upper Harbor, another. And I just feel the activation of these two particular assets is so critical, and I really hope that we can impress upon the BET just how critical it is to have those two assets full functioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Schiefer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's great to see that you guys really worked with the city to negotiate down that 3-1-1 number. I know that was kind of shock when you first brought that forward. And just my couple of comments right now are, I will be supporting this increase at this point in time. I will be reconsidering when the mayor's budget. I will be reconsidering when the mayor's budget comes out. Parks are really elemental to who we are as a city. And Graco has been waiting. Upper Harbor's coming. That's an important park. We do want to get its fair share as soon as we can. And, but if we, depending on what comes out, that is the area where we may have to hold on Graco at Upper Terminal, Upper Harbor, or have some finessing happen in that line item. But the rest of this is set. We have to support our workers. We have to follow through on our contract commitment. And so yet I am very sensitive to the property tax increases that many homeowners are feeling. And a 7% increase for us translates to a 1% on our tax bill. And that's, that's significant. And so I want to recognize that and state I will be supporting this at this time. But really, we'll be watching when the mayor's report comes out to see what does the city mirror? Are they going to tighten their belt? And if they do, we may have to tighten our belt some more. If the, if the city does not lead in that area, then we, then we need to follow suit. So I will be watching carefully that, and I'm happy to support this in committee.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schaefer. President Abeni, please.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I'm not on this committee, but I appreciate the chance to speak. And it's great to follow Commissioner Schaefer's comments. Because I think that the other thing to remember is, yes, if we see, if we see the city taking some steps that they're also asking us to take, that's one thing. But if they're only asking us to take the steps that they're not taking in, to be candid, so far, that's what it looks like, honestly, to a large extent. I'll also just point, remind people that essentially, we're pretty close to what we had projected for this year's increase last year. That was in the 6th range. The reason it's gone up is because of the fee we're getting from the city, those charges that we're getting from the city. So we've been pretty consistent. And our, and the budget work that's done by the wonderful team here at the Park Board doesn't have any fatal flaws or problems. It's, it's very, it's accurate, and it really projects out well. So sort of you know where you're heading. So we have, as a group, the organization, we, we haven't added any new or fancy things. We're just trying to keep the services that we have in place and meet our obligations and be realistic about things like inflation. So thanks for letting me make those comments.
Absolutely. Commissioner Forney, for a second time.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to also add that I did watch, and I really appreciate that. I know the President Abeni was proactive in bringing people to testify, and I really, really appreciate that. And I know that rinks, ice rinks are really, really critical to everybody's passion. I don't know why, but I just suddenly noticed that we don't have any water rafts out on any of our lakes. And we miss that, we really do. But we've had to make budget constraints, and I applaud staff as far as looking at how can we not cut these wonderful, wonderful assets that everybody enjoys. And I really appreciate them, you know, weighing everything. And hope someday we can get water rafts back. Thank you.
Did you have another question? Thank you, and thank you to all the comments of my colleagues. This is, this is something I'm profoundly passionate about because money, money and how you manage it means jobs, and it means parks, and it means all the services and all the things that we're all talking about. And hearing some of these, hearing some of the wastes, not just in this meeting, but in my time, my short time on the Audit Committee, has been challenging to hear, knowing how we are struggling. And then there's a lot of stuff that just rolls right through the city. So I would, I would echo what, what Commissioner Schaefer says about hoping that they too will look at tightening their belt. Although this is a, this is a, I cannot put too fine a point on this. This is a, I know we all know it up here, but to the public, this is a profoundly challenging fiscal time for everybody from the state on down. And I just hope that we can find ways to work with our partners to get what we need. Thank you so much, Director Weisman, for that presentation. I love the graphics. I love the dollars sliced up because it's great. And no shade on Shakopee, but I don't think that they're winning any awards. So like, I think pushing to 18% is actually worth it. So again, no shade, but come on. All right, seeing no other lights, all those in favor of Resolution 2025-38, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. Would someone like to move our next resolution?
I will move Resolution 2025-137, a resolution accepting the nomination and initiating the public hearing process to rename Marcy Park to Dinky Park as proposed by the Marcy Homes Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent Ringold to talk about it. Thank you so much. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Thompson and Commissioners. This is the first time you will have done what you're going to do tonight. So we, we expect that there might be questions. There might be needs for clarity, so don't hesitate to ask. But this is the first time you're asked to apply the brand-new policy that has the updated procedure where nomination comes to committee, you're able to determine if it should go forward or not, changes. You can advance it to the full board. And then, if it's approved through that, we would begin the public hearing process. So that is the job in front of us tonight. I am joined by the nominators. Ted Tucker is here, and Chris, I've never had to say his last name publicly, Lauten Schlogger? Oh, okay, all right. So off to a roaring start. So the, the request that was put forward to us is to rename Marcy Park to Dinky Park. It was submitted on September 12, 2024. And it was submitted by the Marcy Homes Neighborhood Association, which is now part of the East Bank Neighborhoods Partnership. Just as a review, I've pulled out, it's also in the background, here's kind of the key new language within your policy that establishes that it goes committee and full board for deliberations before moving forward into the public hearing process. And there are three options articulated. There's probably more, but at least the policy lays out three possible options where you can determine that the materials are accurate and meet the intent of the naming as identified in Section B, and I'll show that in a second, and is ready to proceed with the naming procedure. You might decide that the nomination should be returned to the nominator for more documentation to address the items in Section B. Or you might suggest that the nomination should not be considered because it fails to meet the items identified in Section B. I will note, this resolution, after some consideration among staff, is written in the affirmative. So as you would think about this, you could vote yes, you could vote no, you could suspend board rules to make an amendment, you could postpone. All of those options would be available to you. But we chose to bring, and would likely do in future situations, bring it through in the affirmative and let you make a decision from there. We talk about Section B a lot in that previous section. This is the exact language from the policy you've been working with for quite a while. And it establishes some kind of high-level thinking for commissioners around naming something. And so the first one is really thinking about the enduring quality of the individual family or groups contributing to the park system. So that's especially if it's proposed to be named after an individual. The second one is to really be taking in the opinions and the responses of local residents. And then the last one, which doesn't pertain to this park because it's not a regional park, establishes some additional thinking when we have a regional amenity that we're working with. I'm just going to show this slide as place-making. And then at this point, I would be asking Ted Tucker to come out, up. He's going to talk a little bit about the reasons for the naming. But just as a frame of reference, in the red box, you can see where Marcy Park is. The park was named for the school that was once on that site. The present Marcy Open School actually is not by this park anymore. It's actually over by Holmes Park. And that Marcy School was named after William A. Marcy. And then, maybe this time Ted, oh, he's right here. I'll let him take it from there.
Good evening, Chair Thompson and Commissioners. Thank you for this chance to present our renaming of Marcy Park to Dinky Park. I'm the president of the East Bank Neighborhood Association. No, I need to change that. I need to get used to it. East Bank Neighborhoods Partnership, the successor organization to the Marcy Homes Neighborhood Association, which merged with two other associations to represent five neighborhoods in southeast Minneapolis. So Marcy School, yes, there's still one there, and it's right next to Holmes Park. That causes some confusion sometimes. I believe there was a repair crew from the Park Board went to do something at Marcy Park, and they immediately went to Holmes Park because it was next to Marcy School. So we need to eliminate a little bit of that confusion. But even more important is to eliminate the name Marcy, who was evidently a favorite of some of the founding St. Anthony citizens. He, Marcy was just a eastern politician. Actually, he was governor of New York and, among other things, sometimes known for the phrase, "To the victor go the spoils", but also for advocating for the extension of slavery by annexing Cuba. So he never came to Minnesota, never did anything for Minneapolis Park Boards. There's no particular reason to keep honoring that name. We find that it'd be much more helpful to have a name that gives the location of the park, which is close to Dinkytown. So when we started our process, and Chris Lauten Schlogger, whose name I can say, we'll have more details, details if you need them. But we, at the beginning, asking for nominations specified no names. We're, we're trying to go for putting, putting this park on the map. And the, as you will see in, in the voting, Dinky or Dinkytown Park, where the, the main winner is from a very extensive community engagement process. And that puts this park right next to Dinkytown or in Dinkytown, which is the area that it serves. So we think that's highly appropriate and hope you will see that as well. So Chris and I are here to stand for any questions, if, if you have any. Did you have more you wanted to go through?
Just, we'll show that slide, too.
Oh. Okay, oh, this was a vote. Did, did we show the, the one of the, William Marcy, our flyer to get? That one, yes. On, on the left, yes. The only park in Dinkytown is named for 19th-century politician who tried to expand slavery. This was trying to get a little, little engagement from the surrounding neighbors, and I think we succeeded magnificently.
Chris, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I can talk about more details.
Chair Thompson, Commissioners, my name is Chris Lauten Schlogger from East Bank Neighborhoods Partnership. I'm the executive director. I'm going to cut a little bit out of this just because Ted did talk about it. But what our concerns were, was does Marcy Park in its new incarnation after the NPP and the park dedication fees that we put forth towards it, does it truly, does it truly commemorate an earlier version of Marcy School, even though the school exists a mere 10 blocks away, causing ongoing confusion for both residents as well as Park Board staff? I was the person who interacted with the Park Board staff who, who kept getting confused between Marcy Park and Holmes Park because Holmes Park is next to Marcy School. At any rate, to address the notion of engagement on this, we distribute, we're very robust with this. And this was all done electronically and in person. To address our concerns, we distributed a petition to our neighborhood in November of 2022. The petition offered no choices, as Ted mentioned. Respondents could arrive at any name they wished. Over many months, they collected over 200 responses on this preliminary query. Responses were wide and varied, including names based on geography as well as, of course, people either famous or somewhat obscure. The petition was distributed up through the grand reopening of the park in June of 2023. Our first board discussion at Marcy Homes of renaming this park did not occur until after the reopening of June of 2023. Board minutes from that meeting reveal that the president intends on sharing a list of possible names that have been gathered from the community over the past six months. The idea is to avoid attempting to rename the park after a person due to the NPRB's need to take several years performing due diligence on person and/or persons. Five months later, in November of 2023, our meeting minutes indicate that a list of possible names to replace the current one at Marcy Park was presented. This list, this list has been generated by participant suggestions over the past 13 months. Staff organized the names by the number of times they were put forward by the community. It was moved and seconded to put forth five finalist names, Dinky Park, Dinkytown Park, 11th Avenue Park, Gopher Park, and Southeast Park. In the following weeks, we sent out a mailer highlighting these five options, as well as one additional choice, do not rename this park. Over 6,000 mailers were delivered to every address in the neighborhood. Our organization spent 7% of our annual operating budget, over $3,600 on this mailing. Eligible voters were able to vote through the month of January 2024 via an online election service that we've used since the beginning of the pandemic. This platform ensured the integrity of the vote and prevented individuals from voting multiple times. Once voting ended, we collected 255 votes, with Dinky Park having 25%, followed by Dinkytown Park at 22. In March 2024, our board officially endorsed Dinky Park, the neighborhood's selection, the most popular choice made by the neighborhood. And we submitted that nomination to you, and here we are today. Happy to give other numbers, but they can be kind of boring.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, that wraps up our presentation. I have this slide up because it kind of articulates some of those key next steps. And I will just affirm that this is not being named after a person, so there would not be a two-year requirement. We would just simply start moving through the public hearing process if you should move this forward to the full board and approve it.
Do any of my colleagues have questions and or comments? And I see no lights. I will be perfectly blunt, as I am known to be, that I literally cannot say this park name without laughing. Because it just, it makes me think of like, I don't know, Dinky. It just, it just, it's a, it's a, it's a very Kramer, Kramer, some side-bell, Cosmo Kramer. It just makes me think of something silly. I understand that the, that the nominators would be okay with the idea of Dinkytown Park. Is that something that would be, may I ask, is that something you'd be open to? I'm just, to guess, that my response might not be, this, might not be wholly unique. Has that come up at all, or am I just have a very juvenile sense of humor?
No, I won't comment on your sense of humor. Chair Thompson and committee members, you, you will see, well, from the previous slide, the two top names were Dinky and Dinkytown. And that's because, I think it was 47% of those who voted wanted to identify this as in that neighborhood.
Yes.
Dinky was new to me until a couple of years ago when giving a tour to some Humphrey students. And they say, oh, all the kids now call it Dinky. So that's probably why that, that showed up. Just a more familiar, I think people tend to shorten things these days. Both ideas, Dinky or Dinkytown, place this near, near the intersection of 14th and 4th and would be quite welcome.
That's actually a fascinating comment that I was unaware of. Do you know the origins of Dinky? Because I'm pretty sure Dinkytown came from a person. Now I'm going off-script a little bit, but I am curious. It's not a person.
Dinky?
Dinky.
No, there, there are various uncertain ideas of where Dinkytown came from. One is it was just a small town, Dinky meaning small, that served the University of Minnesota students and faculty. Another is that there, because there's a railroad, if you know Dinkytown, in the trench going sort of diagonally through Dinkytown. There was a switching engine called a Dinky, which would move cars around on those tracks. Who knows? I have a good friend who's done a history of Dinkytown, and he can't say for sure what it is. He's heard many more theories than that. In fact, I, I think the Dinkytown being published anywhere doesn't really show up until 1948. So it's, it's recent. But it's, no one has ever suggested it was named for Mr. Dinky.
Fascinating. See, see, I'm not alone. I am, I mean, I, I, it, I don't need to procedurally cause a problem if I'm the only buddy, only I am, I mean, I, I don't need to procedurally cause a problem if I'm the only person who sees this, but I am curious if anybody else. Yes, Commissioner Muzic.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given an opportunity to speak. I'm curious to hear what the district commissioner's thoughts are on this nomination.
Oh, yes, I am so sorry. Yes, Commissioner Minz.
Thanks. Thanks for asking my opinion, Commissioner Muzic. So I think that the community, obviously I think Dinkytown or Dinky Park, either one, is an improvement. And getting into the details, I'm not sure, I mean, maybe Mr. Lautenschlager could go back to the board and see if there's a way for them to submit Dinkytown Park, if there's a procedural way to do that, where it's specific if this board of commissioners is more comfortable with Dinkytown versus Dinky. So I'm comfortable with Dinky. I'm also comfortable with Dinkytown. I think that the community engagement they went through is really incredible, but the difference is seven votes, right? It's seven people or eight people, depending on how you measure, you know, the percentage of 255. So do we have to amend this resolution to say Dinkytown if the commissioners are? But I also don't want to necessarily, you know, succumb to Commissioner Thompson's worry that it's a little quirky, but. Very, the community is very supportive of this change and it was a little controversial at the beginning, but I think that it's our responsibility to sort of remove names from parks that are for people who don't express or have any values that we necessarily were aligned with. We get caught into these, this wordplay. So I'm comfortable with either, Commissioner Muzic. I just like the community engagement that they went through.
I will get to you in one second, Commissioner Forni. I will say that I had a rather long conversation with Deputy Superintendent Ringold around what to do in the different, because this is the first time that we've gone through this process and my ridiculous sense of humor, but I thought what, so I appreciate hearing that that's like the slang with young people now, I guess, you know, wasn't when I was at school there. But we did talk about potentially changing it even from, like procedurally from the DIIS, but I don't want to cause consternation for the neighborhood. Commissioner Forni.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations on the robust reaching outreach that you did. Having graduated from the U, to me, Dinkytown is one place and the park is another place. So I, even though it's relatively close and everything, and that's why I really like that name, Dinky. I think it's quite appropriate and affectionate and would support leaving it as is.
Commissioner Minz, did you have something to add?
I do, thank you. As we're going through this, you know, also, Dinky, Marcy Park's small and Dinky, we thought maybe means small, so it kind of distinguishes it from Holmes Park. So I'm supportive of this. I'm not on this committee, but I'm very supportive of renaming this park and if it needs to be Dinky, I would like it to be Dinky. That's a great name for it.
Well, I have been convinced it didn't take much. And I appreciate the commentary. I had to admit that it was a thing and it is a Dinky Park. I will say, though, as we potentially rename this, rest in peace, the rock band from the 1990s, Marcy Playground, because I was from that school and that playground. Am I giving a shout out to my age? I don't know. Okay, well, I don't see any other lights, so I will not propose to amend this and we'll just take it as it is. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-137, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Would someone like to move our last resolution from Administration and Finance? I'll move it. Resolution 2025-113, resolution, am I reading the right thing? Yes. A warding a construction contract, Custom Builders Incorporated for the base bid amount of $1,144,095 for the Central Jim's Skate Park Project, bid event number 3527, pending approval by the City of Minneapolis Finance and Property Services Procurement Division and the Minneapolis Civil Rights Department, authorizing administrative use of a 5% construction contingency up to $57,247.95 for necessary construction change orders that may arise within the contract, amending the capital improvement program to allocate $21,045.50 in parkland dedication funds from the central neighborhood portion of the Dibble Hornstein Parkland Dedication Fund to the project and allocating $79,286.95. Looks like we have an extra decimal. From the 2024 and 2025 MPP20 Capital Investment Construction Contingency Fund to the project. Vice President Muzic.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, for the opportunity to speak because I'm not on this committee. So this morning I had the pleasure of reading in MinPost that as part of the special session that $4 million was reallocated to skate park projects across the state, including $250,000 to this park and another $400,000 to Fallell Park. But I don't see that as a source of funding towards this project. Can someone help me understand why that is?
Thank you for that question. That is very timely.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Muzic, we'll be bringing an amendment back once we get the paperwork in order for the grant. And so we'll be reallocating the dollars that would have otherwise been directed to this to other projects once we get the grant paperwork in order.
Fantastic. That is exciting news. Thank you so much for the clarification. We've been waiting on this since a long time, so I'm excited to see that we finally get to move it forward. Lots of, lots of people in the neighborhood are ready for a cool skate spot, so I hope this passes out of committee so we can vote on it at our next meeting.
That is, that is great. Seeing no other lights, I will say I have heard that Commissioner Elper can't be here, but she is in support of getting this through. So seeing no lights, all in favor of Resolution 2025-113, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And with that, I will adjourn the Administration and Finance Committee. I believe I'm turning it back to the full board, is that correct? For this? No, okay, we're running a planning.
I would like to then convene the planning committee here at 616. If our secretary would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Elper, absent. Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Forni.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Also move.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. I'll take a motion then to approve the minutes of June's 18th.
I'll move the minutes of June 18th, 2025.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries as well. We then are moving very swiftly to our resolution. If somebody would like to share that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll move Resolution 2025-136. Resolution authorizing the board president and secretary of the board to execute limited use permit number 2700-0281 with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation to provide for maintenance and use by the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board upon a long and adjacent to Trunk Highway 394, 35W, 94, 65, and 62.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody want any presentation? Any, I don't see any lights. Commissioner Schaefer.
Yeah, I'd just like a quick, high-level overview.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Forni. Commissioner Schaefer, I don't have a formal presentation, but I do have some of the graphics that were contained in the packet that I can pop up on the screen if necessary. But suffice it to say that, like any landowner, I think MinDOT would like us to have authorization to operate trails on MinDOT right-of-way. So those are the interstate highways and also the trunk highways that run through the city of Minneapolis. We have a variety of trails that pass over and under these trunk highways. For instance, Main Street Southeast passes underneath the 3rd Avenue Central Avenue Bridge, which is a trunk highway. In some cases, these trailways have expired permits from MinDOT. In some cases, there have never been permits. And as a process of working with MinDOT over the past nine to 12 months to kind of clean up some of these land entitlements, we were able to actually execute what is before you today, which is a single permit for our entire trail system where it crosses the trunk highway system. This permit is amendable. Should we implement new trail corridors across MinDOT right-of-way with their permission? It's a 10-year permit with 10-year extensions. There's no cost associated with that. It essentially grants us the right to operate and maintain the trails themselves. The parkway roads exist under different rules, but the trails themselves have to be permitted. So there are 11 specific locations here and then there's one more at Neiman that's more complicated to untangle, and so we may do so and then amend that into this agreement at a later date. But essentially, you would be approving a single limited use permit with MinDOT to authorize all of our trails to cross various MinDOT rights-of-way.
Thank you, that was very helpful. And I'll just commend staff on making things more efficient. I really appreciate it. So not seeing any other lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That action carries. Onto our next resolution. Somebody would like to share that?
Yeah, I'll move Resolution 2025-133. A resolution concurring with the Federal Transit Authority's de minimis finding under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for the Blue Line Extension Project adjacent to and within Worth-Victory Memorial Parkway Regional Trail.
Thank you. Any lights? Any need for presentation? Okay. Oh, the lights are just binging away. All right. Oh, okay. Only Commissioner Rucker, I see, so yeah.
Oh, no, I was just asking for a presentation and so.
Oh, presentation. Take it away, Director Iverson.
Chair Forni, commissioners, I was assuming you'd want a presentation on this one, that's why I jumped ahead and got up here. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to give a little bit of an introduction and then the Blue Line Project Office staff will actually take you through this presentation. But I just want to kind of preface by saying this is, this is a pretty big night and a big decision for you all. 4F is a critically important tool to preserve parkland in the face of transportation projects, sometimes to modify those transportation projects in important ways and sometimes to acknowledge that the intersection of transit and parks can be beneficial. And that question is really what's before you today. The root question here is will the Blue Line Project have a minimal effect on parkland that it crosses? The Blue Line Project has taken, as you know, many twists and turns throughout its multi-year history. I think I've been here almost 12 years and this was one of the first technical advisory committees I began sitting on when the Blue Line was in its previous corridor near Worth Park. There was a similar 4F process at that time and now the 4F process is focused primarily on the Lowry Avenue-Broadway-Victory Memorial Parkway area. Previous actions that you have taken were an official comment on the supplemental draft environmental impact statement. And so the project office is going to talk about how they've responded to that. And in the interim, you'll recall there was a study item where the project office updated you on design process and development that had been taking place around the Lowry Avenue Station area. And so this presentation is going to walk through what 4F means and some of the commitments that the project is making to mitigate harms to parks. And with that, I'm going to introduce Kelsey Young from the project office, who has been leading the environmental entitlements associated with this project. And after Kelsey's presentation, Kelsey and I will be available to answer questions as well as other members of the project team. With that, Kelsey, would you like to step forward?
Thank you, Chair Forni and committee members, and thank you so much for the opportunity to present and share information about the resolution before you. Just to provide a quick overview of what we plan to present about here, we'll highlight the past coordination with NPRB related to the project and specific to the Lowry Station area as well as other topics raised in the comments from, on the supplemental draft environmental impact statement. I'll provide more information about the Section 4F concurrence request before you today and highlight topics of continued coordination. To provide a brief overview of NPRB's comments on the SDIS, you all had requested clarification related to the Federal Transit Administration's Section 4F determination and the language around that presented in the supplemental draft environmental impact statement published in 2024. You also had a number of comments and questions related to the design of the Lowry Station area, comments related to the property ownership and jurisdiction relationships as well as pedestrian and bicycle access along, around, along and across Broadway Avenue. And so I'll walk through each of these topics in the presentation here. The draft Section 4F evaluation was included in the supplemental final environmental impact statement that we published just this past May 2025. That includes an updated Section 4F evaluation for the revised design that we discussed with you all back in February. So that has been updated and is presented in the Section 4F documentation that is part of that supplemental final environmental impact statement. On that set of documents, there was a 30-day review period where members of the public and government agencies could comment. And within that document, just want to clarify that what is presented is FTA's intent to make a de minimis finding for the Worth and Victory Memorial Parkway Regional Trail. That's the nomenclature that you all had requested that we use for the park area surrounding Lowry Station. And so de minimis finding is appropriate when the activities, features, and attributes of the recreation property are not adversely affected. And that can include consideration of mitigation, which is part of what we are presenting here today and within our concurrence request. To clarify, FTA plans to make that determination as part of the final Section 4F evaluation pending review of the comments received, which I'll give a summary of here later in the presentation. And after, we hope to receive NPRB's concurrence on the 4F. So those two steps need to occur before FTA can formally make the de minimis determination. So FTA has formally requested NPRB's concurrence related to that de minimis conclusion of the activities, features, and attributes of the park are not adversely affected. To highlight some of the continued design coordination, much of this is what we presented to you all back in February, that we engaged a stakeholder working group to continue evaluating options. This, the outcome of this included development of the nine options that we discussed with you back in February that led to the outcome of the option H option where the LRT and the parkway no longer intersect as part of the project's design. And just to recap, there was extensive public engagement as part of that design coordination effort and back when we were with you in February, we gave an overview of that and what we were hearing from community members. That led to the Blue Line Extension Project Decision Board formally directing the project team to modify the design to incorporate that option H concept into the project design. So the language of the resolution here is on screen here that we were directed to modify the station design in accordance with that option H to resolve the interaction between the light rail and the parkway and to continue analysis of that modified concept in the supplemental final environmental impact statement. Continued design coordination that has occurred with NPRB staff since then has focused on a number of topics, including the trail and sidewalk configuration surrounding the station and within the park, a number of the bicycle and pedestrian, both sidewalk and trail connections will be reconstructed as part of both sidewalk and trail connections will be reconstructed as part of the project. And so we've been in coordination about what do those specific routes want to be and what design elements want to be on NPRB-owned property, both current and future, and how bicyclists and pedestrians can navigate both to the station and to get to their destinations beyond, and trail users as well. We've also been in ongoing conversations related to the design of stormwater management, both to serve the light rail infrastructure and to manage water within the site. And we're anticipating that that will be an ongoing topic of design coordination as well to ensure that the stormwater management design aligns with the intention of the park design. We've also had conversations related to the traction power substation location. And I'll show a graphic later in the presentation and can highlight that location. But what's important from a parks perspective is that the TPSS is a small building that is related to the transportation infrastructure to help power the light rail. And in our coordination with NPRB staff, it was important to cite that in a way that would be minimally disruptive to recreation, you know, park users. We've also had continuing conversations around maintenance and equipment access, you know, diving into the details on how maintenance vehicles would access things such as the traction power substation and other needs such as the light rail platform. And we've also had some conversations related to the current and future dispositions of the property easement, the existing Hennepin County transportation easement, and future land ownership goals. And the key with this is that the goal was focused on the comments submitted by NPRB and with the goal of increasing parkland and that disencumbering park property by other uses that are non-recreational in nature. And so we have some additional information about that in our presentation as well. So on the topic of land ownership and jurisdiction, since that was part of NPRB's comments on the SDEIS, the project and Hennepin County are committed to continuing to explore reducing the size of the transportation easement relative to the new parkland. I have a graphic that I'll present that will help convey that intention as well. But basically, we have the goal of rightsizing the future transportation easement to hopefully disencumber park property from within that existing transportation easement that in some areas is no longer needed because the other transportation infrastructure has been moved out of that current easement area. We will continue to seek, or we will in the future, seek NPRB concurrence related to that future transportation easement and the terms, as well as the property transfer of the new parkland underlying the realigned parkway. And that is a major way that we are responding to NPRB's comments on the SDEIS. And part of our discussion back in February, when we were discussing the modified design, that it was important to NPRB that the future parkway location be located on NPRB property. And so that is part of what we are proposing to resolve as part of the project's property disposition. To present a comparison of what's there today and what we are proposing as part of the project, and I'll just briefly show the next graphic so that you can have a visual, and then I'll come back to this and walk through it. But the project is proposing to reduce the Hennepin County transportation easement over NPRB-owned land relative to the new parkland that the project is proposing to convey to NPRB. And then the second piece is that that new parkland, the project is proposing to transfer that parkland into NPRB ownership. So the existing footprint of park area currently is approximately 13.5 acres. In the future condition, that total park area would be approximately 18.7 acres. There is a slight decrease in that easement area, but when we walk through the next graphic, you'll see that the existing transportation easement area is smaller than it is today. And part of what you see in that number is future easement that would be needed as part of that future NPRB property transfer to accommodate some of the transportation infrastructure and access as part of the project. And so another piece of this story is that there is an increase from seven acres to 12.5 acres in park area that in this future proposal would no longer be encumbered by easement. And then the other piece is that within our total park area, there would be approximately 0.6 acres of land used for stormwater treatment management, stormwater BMPs. All of these acreages are approximate and based on our current conversations with NPRB staff. And the specifics of the future property disposition will be a subject of future conversations. This is for the basis of the Section 4F evaluation, and that will need to get finalized and refined. So these acreages are not exact and final, and there is certainly room for those continued conversations with NPRB staff to ensure that the property ownership disposition aligns with the intention of the de minimis finding. So to walk through this a little bit, in the center of the image here, you can see the light rail station platform. This graphic is depicting a future, this is our future proposed station area and park property shown in green. Of course, the trails and parkway will continue on past the edge of the boundary that is shown here. Some other things to highlight are those green shapes. Those represent the stormwater treatment, stormwater BMPs, which we are in conversation with NPRB staff around what that specific design wants to be to align with NPRB goals such as passive recreation opportunities, birding, things like that. There's also the small building that you can see. Just to the, I should also point out that north is actually on the left-hand side of this figure. Oh, great, thank you. So and then just to point out that this is the traction power substation that we discussed and a vehicle access pathway here. So this is the new location, proposed location of the parkway. And then you see the realigned, reconstructed trails as part of the project to make everything fit together and also serve the needs of people using the trails, not related to the light rail, but from a recreation standpoint. And so you can see that this area here is all not currently in park ownership. And this is the primary area that we are proposing to convey to NPRB in the future condition with some transportation easement on top of it here. But roughly in this area is currently within transportation easement. So you can see that there's more available land in this area that has other recreation possibilities as well. The last topic raised in the NPRB comment letter on the supplemental draft environmental impact statement relates to bicycle and pedestrian crossings of West Broadway through that continued design coordination and development related to the design along West Broadway. The project now includes crossings both at Illion and Knox Avenues, as well as we've incorporated an expansion of the project limits along James Avenue so that we can include that transition point for the Northside Greenway. And so between those improvements and other coordination, we feel that we've been able to accommodate NPRB's request that we consider how Northside residents can get across Broadway and continue to reach destinations such as the surrounding area parks. To provide a brief comment summary from what we heard during the comment period on the supplemental final environmental impact statement and updated draft Section 4F evaluation, we received 27 comments in total. Many of the comments from community members were general support or opposition, not specific to any particular impacts, but more about the project in general or support for expanding our regional transit system. We received comments from a number of our agency partners that will continue that coordination with those entities. Also wanted to denote that the State of Minneapolis in their formal comments deferred to NPRB related to park issues. We also received some comments from Metropolitan Council, Metro Transit's overall agency, and recommending that we continue coordination with park and trail owners, including NPRB. And then from as far as community or more specific comments received related to the Section 4F, there was one public comment received that was supportive in nature about the station's improving, the station improves opportunities to access the park and voicing support for expanding the park property surrounding the station. And just want to note that that comment was received from a resident of Robbinsdale. And then just to highlight the next steps, after you all have considered the resolution, FTA intends to include the outcome of the Section 4F evaluation process along with the amended record of decision. And we are anticipating FTA will complete that in August 2025. The coordination with NPRB related to the design refinements that I've mentioned along the way in this presentation will continue on into final design, as well as will need to seek concurrence from NPRB related to the property documentation and transfer, as I've discussed in this presentation. And that concludes the presentation, and we'll turn it back to Adam.
Chair Forney, before I yield the mic, I just wanted to say, just in terms of due diligence for the board, I did not bring forward a letter for you to approve to comment on the supplemental final environmental impact statement primarily for two reasons. When reviewing the SFEIS against the official park board commentary on the draft impact statement, it felt like the vast majority of items that you had raised in that letter actually had been addressed in the supplemental final. In addition, the timing of this action tonight is unique to the park board, unlike the other cities who have already passed through municipal consent. So it felt less important for us to comment on that document. And instead, we can take this action essentially as either a statement of concern or a statement of acceptance of the supplemental final EIS. I want to also give a quick shout-out in connection to all of you to Design Project Manager Carol Hailstone, who has also been engaged in the project and is attending all of the meetings and is highly versed in this project as well. So that's another opportunity. If the board members have questions as the project progresses, Carol's going to become more involved as the design moves forward, as Ms. Young shared with us. And with that, Chair Forney, we will stand for questions.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Commissioner Thompson?
I actually believe that Commissioner Rucker beat him by a half second if he'd like to. I just wanted to defer. We were both very excited.
Go forward, Commissioner Rucker. Yes, sorry.
First and foremost, I want to recognize Maggie, Senior Policy A for Minneapolis City Council member, the Tricia Vito. Thanks for being here. The project, you know, at first, you know, I wasn't really about it because I'm a Northsider, and it just felt like it was a commuter from the suburbs to downtown, downtown, back to the suburbs. But the H option, I prefer because the first few that you guys were presenting, I was totally against them. But just thank you for your presentation and due diligence in opening up people's eyes where it can work. But just continue to work hard so these people on the Northside will not feel a negative impact with this project.
Now, Commissioner Thompson, sorry.
Thank you. No, I wanted to defer. I do have a few questions. I think for, I apologize, Kelsey, I forgot your last name. I want to, Young, sorry, Ms. Young, my questions are for you. Who makes the FTA determination? Do you make that, that we're concurring with?
Chair Forney, Commissioner Thompson, formerly FTA is the entity that issues that determination. We, as project staff, work closely together with them as the project proposers. So much of the documentation we develop as project staff and provide a recommendation to the Federal Transit Administration.
Is there, like, logistically, is somebody from the Federal Transit Administration, like, are they located here in the Twin Cities area? Or is it somebody that comes from Washington, DC? I'm just genuinely curious.
Commissioner Thompson, the staff that we work with are primarily located out of FTA's Chicago office, Region 5.
Okay, thank you. That's an interesting, fun fact. Now, I get to learn for my whole life. Let's see, I have so many notes and questions. I apologize. At this location, who actually is the underlying landowner? That's NPRB, isn't it? Am I correct in that? Can someone answer for me? We talked about easements, and I want to be clear that, like, those are easements that the park board is already granting the Metropolitan Council. Is that correct?
Chair Forney, Commissioner Thompson, the current existing situation is that we understand NPRB to be the underlying property owner of the existing park property. And then there is a transportation easement owned by Hennepin County.
Okay, great, that's how it went. So one of the deep challenges for me about this project that I have been involved with since forever is that in all the iterations, and I know that this H is what we in the last draft SDEIS, I think is what it's called, had said that that would be air quotes preferred. But that to me, that was the least of all problematic things for me. Because nowhere in this have we ever studied or talked about why the station hasn't been where most residents would want it, which is in front of North Memorial. And I recognize that since our thing, whenever it was, in February, it was like a year ago now when we passed out, wasn't it? I recognize that we were presented with options, and this was the best of those options. But I am going to ask again, why in this entire process was that never considered? We were always approached with a high line or a rail crossing or guardrails or a bridge. And then I took a lot of flak for the idea of a tunnel. But nowhere did we say, "Let's just run it concurrently with West Broadway and put the station in front of North Memorial." And that's literally what every resident near me said that they wanted. Why have we not just even considered it?
Chair Forney and Commissioner Thompson, we did in the past evaluate a station location. Well, in earlier iterations, we evaluated a number of station locations as part of the route reevaluation, tracing back to when the project needed to be modified to a different alignment when the BNSF route was not able to advance. And so a number of other alignments and station options were considered at that time. And the general route of West Broadway and getting onto County Road 81 was the option that advanced out of that route modification process. And from there, we did consider stations, including several station locations closer to North Memorial Hospital. station locations closer to North Memorial Hospital. And, uh, the current proposed station location and iterations thereof, uh, you know, tracing back to the, the preview, previous, um, options that, that we had considered and, and brought before you, uh, this, this station location really, um, balances a location that provides easy access to the hospital, but also provides easy access, uh, to the surrounding neighborhoods. And so we, that it largely, that decision is, uh, grounded in ridership projections of, you know, neighbor, uh, residential neighborhoods, um, you know, using, using the light rail station.
Couldn't that exact same argument be used by placing it in front of the hospital and saying it gives access to the hospital? Cause we're talking about like 60 feet, 70 feet. We're not talking about like a mile away.
Right. That it's a, it's a balance of shifting the station location further north would mean that, uh, we would lose people that, uh, would be able to walk from residential neighborhoods to the south.
And we didn't consider a Lowry station actually on Lowry either?
Um, I, I may, I may not be entirely-
I suppose I, I like, like on the-
-clear on the location.
-south side of Victory Memorial Drive versus the nor-, so the hospital's on the north side, the south side of Victory Memorial Drive where all the potential riders would be. We didn't consider that, which would still, again, be pretty easy access to the hospital and the park.
Commissioner, uh, Thompson, uh, Chair Forney, um, the shifting the station location is, is really, again, about maximizing that ridership draw. So, you know, we are, uh, hoping that the station would serve, our, our ridership modeling shows that the station would serve both people getting to and from the hospital, you know, hospital employees and so forth, as well as the residential neighborhood. So shifting the station further south would make that, uh, that routing, you know, people walking to and from the hospital more, that, that would increase that, um, travel time. So that can influence people's decisions about whether it's a convenient option as they're getting, um, depending on the station location relative to both, you know, where they're coming from and where they're going to.
So-
Excuse me, Commissioner. I believe that your time is up, so I, I need to move to our-
Okay.
-another. So I believe that Commissioner Schaefer had-
I was curious, um, if the federal funding for this project was in jeopardy and what the latest update was on that.
Uh, Chair Forney and, uh, Commissioner Schaefer, uh, we are continuing to work with the Federal Transit Administration, uh, to pursue federal funding through the capital investment grant program. That grant program is still in place and the Federal Transit Administration continues to be great partners to us, uh, to continue, um, advancing this project forward to formally seek federal funding. So we have not yet reached that milestone of formally seeking federal funding, uh, but we believe that we are on track to, uh, formally seek that funding in the future and the funding program is still in place.
Great. And, and our decision here today stands, if for some reason the funding falls through for some reason, this decision still stands for when, um, or would the project keep moving forward irregardless of federal funding?
Uh, Chair Forney, Commissioner Schaefer, if, uh, if federal funding, the, the decision today is specific to the section four F-
Yes.
-concurrence and, uh, that is, you know, specific to the environmental review and associated laws, regulations and processes. And so from that aspect, that would, that decision would still stand. Um, however, in, in future, um, in, depending on f- funding outcomes, that would need to be, um, as a, as a project and with our project partners, that is something that we would need to evaluate at that time.
Commissioner Schaefer, Chair Forney, I would just add to that, that, um, you know, there, there is an example of that reality within this very corridor. So, um, a previous board went all the way through a four F approval process for a corridor that would have impacted, um, Theo Worth Park. And because of project externalities, in that case, it was, um, land control, um, the route had to change. Those four F approvals were no longer valid because we were talking about different park resources, different park impacts, different mitigations. And so if this project were at some point to change scope because of funding, then, um, uh, a, a reconcurrence of four F would depend on how much the project is changing, um, uh, and how, how much it bears a resemblance to what you're looking at today and the parameters around that. So, um, if there were a change to the project, as Ms. Young has described, I mean, I think the project office sort of has to go back to the drawing board and figure out what pieces of this can be preserved in terms of the environmental entitlement and what has to be completely new. Um, and then, uh, we would probably have an opportunity to reconcur or to change our concurrence in some way based on those new realities.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then I just had one further question. If this progresses and everything is in line, what is the approximate timeline?
Uh, yes. Uh, Chair Forney and Commissioner Schaefer, um, the next steps ahead of us are, as I mentioned, the amended record of decision. We are anticipating in August 2025. Um, from there, we have, uh, a final design process ahead of us and we are anticipating construction starting, uh, late 2026 into 2027. Um, and there would be roughly, uh, four years of construction.
Thank you.
Presidente Benny?
Thank you, uh, Chair Forney. I'm not on this committee, but I wanted to just make a couple of comments. Um, I think one comment is, um, you know, I've, I've, in my day job, I've served on large transportation proj- projects as a staff person. And so it's been interesting to be on this, in this role for this project. So I want to say thank you to the staff team at the park board that's been working really hard on this and, um, staying, staying with this and also for, uh, the, the, you know, the Blue Line team, uh, because I think you've listened to us, I think, to a large extent here. And also thank you to these commissioners because I think it's been interesting to watch, no, we don't like that. What about something over here? And you guys responded to that. So the grade separated design, I think, is a real, is a real win. Um, my only question would be, so once we've done our four F piece here, that's an important card we have to play or, uh, you know, a point. But there'll be still, um, a lot of engagement, I guess I'm asking, with the park board staff. I think there'll be ma- not only design choices as you move through the space, um, but also maybe maintenance and operation agreements. That's something I'm pretty concerned about, honestly. So can you describe the involvement with this a, um, agency once we've done our four F piece?
Yes, Chair Forney and, uh, Park Board Chair Benny, um, our, our next steps, uh, well, of the, the primary space that we coordinate with, um, MPRB staff is through, uh, through an ongoing set of meetings. And then we, we typically will meet with park board staff on, um, park board very specific issues. Um, so those, those topics of continued coordination, um, include those, uh, future property ownership easement and land conveyance. Um, I, I think I have like a slide that kind of laid those out, maybe not. Um, but, um, yes, the, the maintenance and, and, um, maintenance agreements, um, refining the property ownership pieces, um, as well as input on the design itself. So, um, continuing to refine the trail alignments, um, other associated infrastructure, um, both, you know, at the station platform and surrounding, um, such as, uh, you know, one, to give an example of a topic in this graphic, um, there, uh, there's a passenger drop off, um, shown along the parkway and that's an active topic of, of conversation. Um, so basically the design details, um, as we progress in the design, you know, we're roughly, uh, we're not even quite to 60% uh, design and, uh, many of these are final design details that we look forward to collaborating and coordinating with MPRB about.
I'm sorry. Should be adjusting you properly. Vice Chair Thompson, for a second there.
Thank you, Chair Forney. Um, and thank you for answering these questions. I'll try to be brief. I, this is an incredibly challenging thing for me, um, as the district commissioner, as a resident, as a neighbor for many, many, many years. Um, and I want to be candid, this does not have my support. Um, because mainly because of two major reasons. Number one is because in all my time on the park board, never once has a legitimate answer been given to me as to why we're constantly looking at only parkland. And I know it's because it, it involves checkmarks with the federal government and federal funding. And, and I get that, but it's still very challenging when I represent protecting our parkland and my, and my constituents who really don't like this. They really don't. And I am here to represent them. And secondly, it's also very hard that, knowing that we've cut off access to the hospital from a lot of people who use it, I understand that it would be really great to be able to flow the parkway the way that it flows. And so I just wanted to be candid that I will not be supporting this, um, right now. I don't know in the future, but I just wanted to say that. And I thank you for your time and I really do appreciate the massive amount of work that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's comments. Um, as Director Arverson said, we've, I don't know, I feel like doing all sorts of plan words and everything, but, um, this has been a long, long road, but I'm grateful that we're on track. Anyway, sorry. Um, having been through, I'm sorry, I can't remember what color anything is, but anyway, Southwest LRT and just, I'm sorry, the abomination of, um, total disregard of parkland and everything. I am so grateful, so grateful of how, um, Mr. Slack, um, it's Young and so many more of you, um, your staff and everything have been respectful and really seriously worked at the connectivity to parkland, which I think was completely ignored in Southwest LRT. Um, I mean, we're, we're, that's what our role is, is to bring people to our parks. And I just feel that this is a, a wonderful opportunity. Um, and on top of it, I always love getting a little bit more land. So thank you, thank you for that. But, um, I, I just think it's been, um, you've heard us. And that means an awful lot to me because having experienced over a decade of not being heard, this is really wonderful. And I, I'm, um, looking forward to it, literally moving forward. Um, on that, um, I will then take a vote. All those in favor of resolution, but I don't remember, yeah, 2025-133, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Yeah. Um, I believe that that, um, action carries. So we'll move on to our next one. Thank you again. Um, if somebody would like to read that next resolution.
I'll read resolution 2025 dash 132. Resolution granting a temporary easement to City of Minneapolis for the Nicollet Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project, located within the Minnehaha Parkway Regional, within the Minnehaha Parkway Regional Trail and reducing easement fees based on quantitative betterments.
Great. Anybody have any questions or any need for anything? Not seeing any lights? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That action carries and I will hereby at 7:02 adjourn the planning committee.
And with that, I will reconvene the full board. And we have one item coming up from the admini- Administration Finance Committee.
I will move resolution 2025 dash 113 and I'll shorten it. It's the resolution awarding a construction contract to custom builders, uh, for the base bid amount of $1,144,959 for Central Jim's Skate Bar Project. Leave it at that for now.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, uh, we have a motion in front of us. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 2025 dash 113, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, that motion carries. And we will move to our final item, which are, was petitions and communications. And I will start with Commissioner Forney.
Pass.
Commissioner Olson.
Pass.
Commissioner Rucker.
Pass.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yeah, I'll just mention, we had a great meeting with community a week ago Monday, thanks to Director Pilger and Rachel Crab for presenting a two hour, sitting with community for over two hours, it ended up being, talking about water quality, um, particularly in Lake of the Isles and the, and Lagoon and indirectly Cedar. And there's a lot of great discussion. Um, this is a topic of high community interest. Um, Lake of the Isles continues to be very difficult to paddleboard in, to kayak and canoe, um, partly due to the nature of the lake, um, and obviously the aesthetic reason. Um, so, uh, community want to know how we can improve it. And so I just appreciated that gift of time and further discussions around that topic.
Thank you. Commissioner Menz.
Um, I'd just like to, Amir Atkins and the tragedy that happened at Falwell Park, I think that those, those things that happened in our parks sometimes feels like we don't honor them enough because there's nothing that we can do that would honor, um, the life of a young person who lost it too early or to the mothers and fathers and family members who are grieving from, from their loss. Amir Atkins was, was a young boy who could have been in my classroom, could have been in anybody who is a teacher in this school district, a classroom or, or anywhere in this, in the state. And I think that it's, although we know, I know, guns are the problem. Guns in this country, guns in this city are the problem. But I also want us to remember that, that this did happen in a park. And I don't know what specifically our ownership is of that or the actions that we can do to help mitigate or prevent these events from happening, but there is something. There's some, there's, there's, there has to be. There has to be something that we can do, that we can do that might prevent the next Amir Atkins from tragically passing in our parks. And I, and I just, as a school teacher, as someone who works with kids and, I don't have the answers. We, we, none of us have the answers. But I want to make sure that, that this did happen in our space. And we, maybe, maybe there's, I don't, I don't know how we're using street reach or how we're using our resources or how, and, and I liked how the, the community members were really showing. And I, and I've talked to Commissioner Rucker about this as well. Like, this does start in the house. Where, where are our children? And, but, but I'd like to say that when they come to the park, they're safe. And we can't, we can't always guarantee that. With, with guns in our community and guns out there with, in the hands of people who want to destroy and want to be destructive, we, we can't guarantee that. And, and I don't want to, to be able to because it's not possible right now. But I will say that, that as, as a commissioner on this board and someone who cares deeply about children, like I know all of you do, what can we do to prevent the next Amir Atkins? And I think that we should all, and, and many of us, I'm sure, are, asking ourselves, what, what little thing, what step, what change? How, how do we support the s- the staff and the people who also maybe work with young people who might be traumatized? What are we doing to make sure that we're being as empathetic and as proactive as we can to make sure that our young people are not driving around, that they're, that they're on a ball field or they're in a park or they're at the pool? How do we get more relationships? We need to build and maintain and encourage the relationships with young people. And I'm really grateful that our parks are designed to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Uh, thank you. Um, I was prepared to talk about that and I will, but first I wanted to thank the superintendent and all of our staff for what they did for Victory Memorial Drive for Memorial Day. It has made a huge difference. The parkway is looking much nicer than it has been. So I appreciate that. Someone wants to come to my yard, I'd love it. Um, joking. Okay. So, yeah, what happened at Falwell was really hard, really horrible and really hard. And, um, I was, I, I was alerted to it rather early. I was at home at the time, so I went over to the park. And, um, I spoke with staff. And I want to thank all of our rec staff. I want to thank all the people who find ways to get it done. I want to thank all of our officers who were there. The sad reality is, and I don't know how broadly this has made it on the news because I haven't necessarily watched this from the news from my position as a commissioner, these were children in stolen cars. And one of them had a semi-automatic weapon somehow. I, I heard the gunshots. I heard the audio file. Um, I, I heard the gunshots, I heard the audio file. Our kids are not okay. This is what I've been shouting from the rooftops for many, many years as a teacher, and I've taken heat from it because it is collaborative, as Commissioner Mends talks about. This young man could have been my student, the people pulling the trigger could have been my student as well because they were juveniles. And I struggle with the idea that we put more pressure on our own Park Board staff, knowing how much they really work to protect these children. And I don't want to get over my skis talking about things that are not public, but I know that our own staff was very close to being in the line of fire on that particular day at 2:00 PM on a beautiful sunny day. And I say this, we talk about finances earlier in our meeting, and now we're talking about public safety. We need our city to step up. And when I say our city, I don't mean our residents, I mean the elected people in our city to step up. Might not shock anybody as to why I'm moving on from the Park Board. But I am heartsick over the children that were involved, that they were in stolen cars on a, on a beautiful afternoon, that a child died on a street corner in the arms of a stranger because that's what happened. That's what happened. So I implore all of us to think in a larger picture. This isn't about Falwell Park. This isn't about a singular school, or a singular school district, or a singular park. It's about all of our young people who have been abandoned for five-plus years to whatever happens. And they tell me about it. I don't know about you, Commissioner Mends, but kids tell me. And because they're juveniles, I hold that with myself. I hold those stories, and I cry with them, and it's awful. So I want to commend our staff. They went through something nobody should have to, and my heart breaks with them, with all the people whose heart breaks. And to the community members who say this has, has to end, please know, I not only agree with you, there are people in this city, there are people on this, at this table right now, who are working very hard, and there are people in this room right now who are working very hard to figure out the structural changes that we need to make to have this end. And I'm sorry to be on a high horse, but it is, I agree with you, I'm, it's awful. And so thank you for the staff. I just cannot commend our staff enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Musich.
Pass.
And I thank everybody for their comments. I'll pass, and I will declare the meeting adjourned.